Order the East Providence City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the role of the council.
Councilman Fogarty?
Yeah.
Councilman Lawson?
Yeah.
Council Vice President Rigo?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Souza?
Yeah.
Council President Rodrick?
Here, the record show all five members are present. And please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could start with the reading of the agenda.
Executive session. The City Council of East Providence may meet in executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two.
I don't see any need to move to private executive session. We can, any questions anyone has, you can ask the solicitor at this time. It seems pretty standard. Mr. Solicitor, would you go through the items?
There are new claims. All of these have been approved or recommended for payment by the Public Works Director. First claim was Paula DeMello for a sewer backup caused by roots from a city tree in the amount of one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. The second claim was a claim for reimbursement incurred as a result of another sewer backup caused by a broken lateral line for Anthony Estrella in the amount of three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Again, the Director of Public Works recommends passage approval. Next to a sewer charge abatement in the amount of three hundred and six dollars for Kevin Miller. And the second one is for fifty Emerald LLC in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and thirty-six thousand thirty-three cents. I'm sorry, I didn't, I think there was a outside, caused by an outside irrigation, irrigation leak. And that's for the second one.
So all of these items are recommended by the city public works, mostly of the fault of, not, not the fault of the persons putting the claims in. Are there any specific questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilwoman Souza to approve the claims as read. Waiting for a second?
Second.
Oh, sorry, second. Second by Vice President Rigo, Councilman Lawson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Next item?
Second calendar, council journals, regular meeting minutes, October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilwoman Souza to approve, seconded by Councilman Lawson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next item?
Licenses for discussion and possible vote. A motion to bundle non-public hearing licenses.
Is there a motion to bundle?
Motion to bundle one and two.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Lawson to bundle items one and two, seconded by Councilwoman Souza. All in favor of the bundling?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, one and two.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Souza to approve items one and two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Public hearing, type of license, liquor license, applicant, attorney Timothy Chapman, attorney for Carol Palermo. Business name, United Skates of America, Inc., DBA. United Skates of America, address seventy-five New Road, East Providence.
Mr. President.
Council Vice President.
In compliance with Rhode Island General Laws thirty-six dash fourteen dash six dash one, I hereby recuse from participation in this discussion or taking official action relating to the said matter. This does not prohibit participation as a member of the public in an open meeting pursuant to Commission Regulations seven zero zero three.
So noted, your recusal. Don't go too far on your coffee break. Stay nearby. This is a public hearing. I believe the applicant is here. I see Attorney Chapman is here. If you want to come forward and identify yourself and maybe give a brief summary.
To bunch who come on up as well. Good evening. My name is Tim Chapman. I'm an attorney located at three forty-nine Warren Avenue in beautiful East Providence. And I'm here on behalf of United Skates, which is a, I don't know if any of you have been out there lately, but it's a family fun skating rink, rollerblading. Used to be Dudley Richards, which maybe some of the, maybe just Bob and Frank. But anyway, great place for family and fun. And you say, why are we introducing alcohol? Because of a few reasons. One is that many of the customers are requesting it. It's a competitive nature with the other establishments that are in East Providence and in Rhode Island. It's something that I think some people might not look at it as a positive thing, but I think based on what the customers have requested, this is something that after many years that we've decided to add to the fun and the events, birthday parties, et cetera, that frankly the patrons are looking for. So having said that, I have Sue Chase here, who's the manager. And Sue has been, how many years, Sue?
Well, I've been at United Skates of America for about forty-one years now. And had gotten purchased, so I've been with this company for about, forty-one years in the, in that facility.
And she can attest to trying to take care of security, trying to take care of the neighbors, making sure that it stays a sound investment and a sound community leader in that area.
Thank you. I never had any complaints in the area, and I think that East Providence needs entertainment facilities like that. We've lost a few through the years, and it gives people a place to go. And I will tell you, though, that when I went to Dudley Richards Rink many moons ago, there wasn't a license, but there was alcohol. The hockey games, but I won't get into specifics.
In your, in your jacket pocket.
Yes. So this is a public hearing. We'll come back to council questions. I'll open it up to the public. If anyone would like to question the applicant or their attorney, please come forward and just identify yourself for the record. Just name an address for the record.
Sure. My name is Sharon McWilliams. I grew up in East Providence. I live now at six one six Roger Williams Avenue, Rumford, Rhode Island, which is the house directly behind the parking lot.
Welcome.
So my issue with this, and I spoke with Sue and her lawyer, they're lovely, but I've already had to call the police two months ago because of a big riot fight behind there. They are in the parking lot doing nips. I'm a nurse, going on thirty-eight years. My mom also is here. She's eighty. We both live there ourselves. And it's security reasons. And also, I feel as a nurse too, drinking and skating and driving kids home is not a good thing during the day. I thought originally it was going to be maybe for one adult night, which already sometimes on those adult nights. And there is something recorded, I think it was two months ago, there was a huge riot in the parking lot itself. And I know that Sue does a lot, but we had to call the police and the fire trucks came. It was, there was a bunch of people in a circle. So I'm just very concerned about safety, driving their kids out of there, security for me and my home, and the loud or quietness of it. There's already routing this, there's plenty, of course, pot is legal. They're all smoking in the parking lot, hanging out. And then they have their little nips. I see that in the car. And then to add alcohol to it, I just think is another, of course, for injuries too, you know, injuries while they're skating. We see enough of that. I worked in the ER for many years. So basically, that's my point. I really don't want alcohol at United Skates. And again, I went to Dudley Richards, I did skating there. I went to USA Skating Rink, and I was just at the USA last summer skating. But that's about it. Did you have anything else to say? My mom would like to speak, if that's okay.
Sure, it's okay. Welcome.
Fifty-two years. The last time I was here was forty-five years ago at zoning board, when they were going to put some apartment buildings where they have the park on Roger Williams Avenue. It's been a long time. My, my point is, number one, if you introduce alcohol, people are going to bring alcohol and stick it in their pockets, like you said, a hockey game. But this really isn't a hockey game. It's a kids' entertainment center, adult entertainment center, roller skating. It's a little different. I think if you allow them to have alcohol, you're going to see a lot more of it. Safety's a big thing. Kids, teenagers, you all know what teenage is like. Excuse me, Sharon, we all, teenagers once ourselves. I think it's a very bad idea. I would not want to see it. I think there's enough problems there now with the fighting. I see parents come, one's dropping one off, one's picking it up. They're having their issues. If you add alcohol, and she'll say to me, oh, it's only this much. It doesn't matter the size, alcohol is alcohol. Whether it's wine, beer, if it's not whiskey, it's not brandy, it's still alcohol. So my, my opinion, I wouldn't want to see it at all. I don't think it's good for the kids. Oh, so dads, okay, let me, let me take them. They got the, we can watch the football game, whatever. I'll take the kids to the roller skating rink. So they're sitting there drinking their beer or their wine, and the kids are there. I mean, maybe the kids can have dad sit there for a couple of hours and not have permission to sit there and drink. I just don't think it's a good thing at all. And from what I heard, there's really no schedule of when this is going to occur. It's going to be anytime they want.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak or ask a question or make a comment? With the applicants, you want to answer any of those concerns?
If you don't mind, I can very much appreciate the McWilliams concerns, and that's why we went out and talked to them. We didn't know they were objecting, but when we found out, I brought them outside and talked with them, with Sue. Sue gave Sharon her personal phone number. We have, I believe, sufficient lighting, especially in the parking lot. There's cameras, and all the servants will be TIP certified. It'll be required under state law to be certified. They're, they've been instructed, or they will continue to be instructed if there's any incidents to call the police. There, I think all of them that will be serving are over twenty-one. There are adults, meaning a little bit older, forty or so older adults that are working there. There's, like I said, cameras in that area. So I think they've taken all the precautions. You know, I can't address the incident two months ago, but I think at any establishment, you're going to have issues. It's how you rectify them, how quickly you rectify them, how you take care of your neighbors. And I think that overall, United Skates has been a very good corporate partner and community partner with their neighbors. So having said that, I don't know if you have any other questions, but Sue's here to answer them.
Mr. Chapman, what are the hours of, is there a request with this application with hours of, is it whenever the business is open or?
That's what we had planned on, but I mean, if you see fit to address that, we would stop at eleven o'clock at night, not have anything further, and see how that goes. If you don't feel comfortable with that, then, you know, we can change that and come back and change that if you'd like.
What are, excuse me?
Yes, please.
What are the business hours?
I was just going to explain. Our business hours during the week, we open up usually from six to eight-thirty, and those are for school fundraisers for parents and their children.
Yeah, Ben, yeah.
PM, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yep. And then same thing on usually on Tuesday nights, same thing on Wednesday nights, on Thursday nights, it's usually six to eight or five-thirty to eight for a school fundraiser. And then we do have an adult skate directly after that. Those adult skaters are there just to skate. Believe me when I tell you that, because I was just there Thursday night, and I said, I'm losing money by having these, they don't go to the snack bar, they don't do anything, so I'm raising the price because I can't get them to even buy a soda or anything. So that would be the adult night, is that one Thursday night. And then Friday, we are open from, till ten o'clock. We're open five-thirty to ten. And then Saturday, we're open ten until nine-thirty. But unless we have an occasional adult skate, which again, those are adult skaters who just want to be in there to skate. And then Sundays, we're open from eleven until seven-thirty. I also wanted to just address the fact that we are a fourteen and under only facility. We have a lot of complaints about that because we have a lot of people who want to bring their teenagers in. The only way anybody under the age of eighteen between, you know, fifteen, sixteen and eighteen come in, they have to be accompanied by an adult, or they are not allowed in our building, just to make you aware of how strict things are.
I didn't realize that. So basically, high school kids can't go there unless they're fourteen or fifteen.
They're working here. But yes, high school kids are not allowed unless they're with their.
With a parent or guardian.
They're allowed in, but they have to be accompanied.
So I think I heard you say the latest you're open is ten PM on any night?
Ten PM on Friday night unless we have a scheduled adult night, which we occasionally do probably, I think, two or three times a month, we will schedule an adult night.
Okay. Which is till what time, eleven?
Usually they go to nine-thirty to twelve.
Twelve, twelve AM. So some restrictions maybe, but not. But my other question was, on the security, besides your cameras and phone, do you have adult supervision outside the lot, like patrolling at times?
We have one of our employees inside the lobby who inspects the bags before everybody walks in the building. So we, we have our, our own employees out there checking bags.
And to address the concerns of the neighbors, what about outside?
Outside, we do not have security. I have tons of things. And the cameras are this big inside our office, which we've had the police department come in and say, we've got the best in the city, just so you know.
Those are just concerns, I'm sure.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes, Councilwoman Souza.
Thank you.
I have two managers who have the cameras available to us at home. Okay? I said, I, I used to live, like I had just told them, I lived at nine-twelve Roger Williams my whole life. So I am part of this neighborhood. I have been there. I have lived on nine-twelve Roger Williams Avenue until I got married and had children. I basically have not lived out of, moved off of Newport Avenue and Rumford my entire life. I've lived on Roger Williams and worked at there, and then worked at Nyman, and then back to the roller skating rink, so.
Well, I want to thank you. Thank you for your commitment to the community.
Just a couple of follow-up questions, if I could. So in addition to the monitoring, can you just be specific, in the lobby, is it those high school students that work there that are monitoring, or do we have adults over the age of eighteen?
It, generally, it's an adult over the age of eighteen. It's one of our older employees. And because of the restrictions with the, the way minors can work, we usually only have the older people work at that night because the younger kids cannot work past a certain time. And we are very strict on how we have our employees work because we need to keep the Department of Labor guidelines. So the majority of the employees who work, I want to say they're all over twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three. I've had, my, my management staff, I have a lot of them been here for at least twenty years, ten years around there.
If I'm not mistaken, you have to be twenty-one or older to serve alcohol?
I believe you have to be, I'm not a hundred percent positive.
TIP certification that they're going to be required.
Yes.
Where, do you know already where in the building you're planning to have the bar set up?
What we're doing, and it's not going to be a bar, we're just looking for beer and wine.
Okay.
Okay? And what we're going to do is, we have a soda machine that sells bottled water, fruit juices, and things like that. And our intent is to just put something this big on top of that soda machine. So if a parent's there and they're watching the Patriots game, and they want a beer, then one of the managers would have to go over. And then the excess beer is going to be locked up in my office. The concession stand is right here. So it'll be down in our snack bar.
Can we clarify what type of liquor license that you're looking?
So the application has a BV license? That's a full license, right? It's, and she just said beer and wine, so.
Yeah, the corporate had requested BV.
BV, BV. So that means a full bar, not full bar, but full, full alcohol with, as long as food served as well. Like can't, you have to, you have to have, you can't have it just a drink, you need to be drinking, drinking and eating at the same time, basically. You have to be, have food available. That's not a BL, BL is.
Right. It wasn't clear on the, on the agenda.
I assume this is going, I mean, I think the council, if they want to grant it, there's a couple of things you need to consider. One, you need to consider not only hours, I think those were good questions, but also location where it can, cannot be served. You want people roaming around outside, it's going to be limited to inside, I'm assuming.
Right.
That needs to be very clear when you, if you do see fit to grant the license that alcohol service in or consumption shall only take place within establishment in a, usually designated area or.
It's going to be in the, in the snack bar.
We can make that limitation so you can't be walking around. I, I don't know.
The snack bar where they host the parties, where all those tables are, right, where the concession stand? A shelfing?
I have a.
Do you have a schematic? Because I haven't seen that. Was that part of the application?
Yeah. You want to mark it? I think I did introduce it, but if not.
This is our snack bar right here. This is our snack bar right here.
And they would agree to do it just inside?
And it's going to be right here up above the freezer, refrigerator that has juices and bottled water and stuff.
But if you're asking for a full service license, that would require more than just a small area to mix drinks, provide drinks. It's not as simple as just.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm a little confused because.
Bottle of wine and the, and the cans of beer.
I'm only going by what a few of the other roller skating rinks do. And majority of them just have a small refrigerator up above there. Nothing is like, we're not, we're not pouring and serving by any means.
But you would have the, you would have the ability under this license to do so, so I just want to make it clear, because I know in Cranston there, I don't know the name of the competitor, but they have a full service section that's, you know, a full bar. So that, that's just my question is, what, what, in the interim, I hear what you're saying, that this is kind of where you want to start, but it does have the ability to then expand. And so I think it's important for us in the community to know what that's going to look like and how to mediate that, because it is in a neighborhood as other areas that I know that have the full licenses and the full bars are more in industrial areas that don't have the homes. And I think it's great to be able to offer this for ghosts, I mean, for adults.
You're limited, what's our application?
So the BV limited would just be beer and wine?
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys were really confusing me.
Yeah, it's, it's not on the docket as, it just says liquor license.
On the application.
Okay.
All right, so we've cleared that up. It's specifically just beer and wine. Okay. Are there other questions of, of the applicant, from anyone, or?
So.
Councilman Lawson?
I'm from down south in Riverside, so I was a Star Wheels kid. But I'm going to make a motion to approve the beer and wine. That's the limited, correct? And that's based on the hours, based on what you're telling us you're going to do. The stuff that happens in the parking lot that's going on now, that's been going on since we were kids, unfortunately. But I don't see a direct correlation with beer exasperating what's already existing, so I make a motion to approve.
Okay, before the motion, though, I want to be able to close the public hearing. I just want to make sure, is there anyone else that has any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And if there are no other questions from the council? Yes, Councilman?
Just clarify the, through the legal.
Yeah.
Department, make sure that we're legally on the hours and everything. That's all my.
I think the license should specify what hours of operation they are allowing the liquor to be sold, and also the location, limited to the snack area, which has been depicted as.
I just want it done right.
So that needs to be, if that's what the council wants to do, that's the council.
Right. So in your motion, Councilman Lawson, could you state, you know, you're moving approval with the location of the beer and wine would be restricted to the snack bar area? That would be part of motion, and that patrons are not allowed to bring the beer or wine outside.
Well, that's for any.
That's for almost any.
That they can't walk outside with the beer.
But it's good to put it as a condition of the license, because generally, when they submit these, they have to submit the location where they're going to serve and, and consume, so.
And other than adult night, every other night, the latest is ten PM?
The ten PM is only on Friday nights. The Saturday nights we close at nine-thirty.
The hours seem fine.
The other night is eight-thirty.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve with the snack bar location, and it has to be indoors, no alcohol outside.
In the hours of operation.
Within the hours of operation, yeah.
Can we just, can we just specify what those hours are? Because you just say the hours.
Five to ten?
Because if you leave it up to the applicant, then the applicant can.
Five to ten. Ten's the latest they're open, so, and they open around five.
The exception of an adult night they may have, which they said could go to midnight.
Yeah, we, you cut it off at midnight? Eleven?
Yeah, we could, we can cut it earlier than midnight if you want.
Sure, so. So no beer or wine after eleven PM?
Up till, so from opening, because you have different opening hours, so from opening hours till eleven PM?
Correct.
Okay. Good. That's good. I'll second that.
Did the clerk get all of the stipulations in the motion? Okay, so a motion by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Fogarty to approve.
And I just added, subject to meeting all other legal requirements, I'm sure they might have to get Department of Health approval and all those issues. I don't know if it's been done yet, but they probably have to get, we're on Department of Health approval and.
There were a couple of things. One was the TIP certification, but we will definitely get that stuff done.
Subject meeting to all other legal requirements, including inspection by the city.
Right, so subject to all the legal requirements, along with the motion and the second. So Madam Clerk, could you call the role of the council? Take your time, but hurry up.
Councilman Fogarty?
Aye.
Councilman Lawson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Rigo? Rodrick?
Aye. So the motion passes four to zero. And to the folks that oppose, just keep in touch with us. I have not heard any complaints until tonight, but I appreciate what you're saying, and it happens at all these types of places. So feel free, call me anytime you see a problem and.
Yep, and the police.
Yep.
Police department gets notified.
Thank you.
Obviously, the council has the right, if there are issues, to have a show cause hearing and either limit or yank the license depending upon the severity of the.
Right, he's always up for review, so thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good to see you again, Tim.
Good luck. Madam Clerk, next item, when you're ready?
Communication, there was non-public comment.
Let's, one second, just let Council Vice President Rigo return and. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Ken Gusher? Gusher, it's closed.
Ken, just your name and address for the record? Welcome.
I'm a proud member of our senior center. That's my main book right now is safety for the seniors. We have traffic lights at Warren and Taunton Avenue. They can make a left turn anytime, going either direction. Having that Taunton and Pawtucket Avenue, same thing. Now you get to Waterman Avenue, they can't make a left turn, and they're trying to cut through traffic just getting to the bridge. So why don't they put the traffic light always like that?
Mr. Gusher, we've been told that when Pawtucket gets repaved, which is on the books, that is going to happen.
Well, that's going to be too late. You might have a bad accident right now. I went to the state, I went to Public Works, I went to the Chief of Police, they said, see the city council.
Well, let, let me just interrupt you for a second, because everyone on this city council has been saying what you're saying for years. I don't know who told you to come to the city council.
city council. That is a state with Island Department of Transportation.
Yes.
Right. If we could do it, we would do it tomorrow morning.
They told me to see you, and then they'll come and check out the traffic light to see how dangerous it is.
Well, we keep asking for it.
Whoever told you that probably didn't realize that there's already a plan.
No, maybe they didn't. I didn't realize it. But I think it should be done before somebody gets killed.
Yeah, I think it should be done right away. You can turn left on other intersections.
Right. And all of a sudden, they can't cut through. I just saw it tonight. I was coming from Shaw's, and I live on Brown Street. Now, I had to get out into that other high-speed lane, we'll call it, because traffic was backed up to Taunton Avenue. So how do people cut in? I go over there at quarter of eight in the morning, delivering donuts, right? I can't get through that traffic light. I got to go around the block or go through the police station to make a U-turn.
I know.
Well, I think maybe you should push the issue now instead of waiting until the bridge is done.
We've been trying.
Oh, it's not the bridge. It's not the bridge. The assistant, sir, and I thank you, Councilman President Rodrick said we do it tomorrow. We would have done it like five days ago already. I mean, that's how bad we wanted it.
Five years.
But five years ago, but the Assistant D O T Director was in town a couple of weeks ago at a meeting, and they, at the senior center, and that subject was broached about that intersection, and it's on their drawing board. So again, I'm pretty strong, but I can't push the guy. We, I totally hear what you're saying. I get frustrated going over there, too. I avoid it, and probably half the people avoid it. But they're saying they're doing it. They're doing the construction now. Hopefully, it's in the next year or so that it gets done.
How hard is it to wait two hours and put a traffic light in there, block the traffic? I mean, this is statewide, that we should all maybe get petitions or whatever, and sign them for everybody in the city.
Mr. Guster, just to let you know, about three years ago, this has been on the agenda multiple times, this issue.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
That's okay. That's all right. I have written letters, and I actually testified a few years ago before the traffic tribunal, and they did do multiple traffic studies, and they do agree that there needs work to be done there, and there is a light, it's just not, unfortunately, on there, it hasn't been a priority for them.
Excuse me now. Can we get somebody from the traffic council to come to the senior center? And I'll get every senior that goes there, six hundred of them, to come and appeal it.
Well, it's in the works, finally, after years.
It's too late in the works.
Well, it's not. It's never too late. It was too late five years ago. It's too late yesterday, and it's going to be too late tomorrow. But we are working on it, and we have an.
Thank you. I said my piece.
No, no, no. Your idea about bringing somebody to the senior center and talking, I would go in there and talk to the director tomorrow, and at her next staff meeting, at the department head meeting, she can bring it up to the mayor, and the mayor has great contacts with D O T. I think they'd be more than happy to bring somebody in there.
Can I call the mayor?
Go ahead. He's the mayor.
And walk right up to the office.
You can walk, yeah. I can do that, too.
You can go that tomorrow morning, go up to his office.
My problem is, it's your grandparents. You're going to be going there in the senior center Sunday.
Oh, I know that.
Looking at me?
Please pickleball there now.
I'll give you an example. I'm eighty-six years old, and I think that we should have bigger push to get that red light fixed. Thank you for your time.
Don't you complain.
Do that tomorrow. I'll call the mayor right now.
All right. Probably upstairs watching, go up there.
Good evening. Candy Seal, I live on South Rose Street, and here as a representative of the nonprofit group Keep Mediacomic Green.
Welcome.
Thank you. That will be a very hard act to follow, but I will give it a try. Thank you, Council President Rodriguez. I'm here to speak about the resolution on the parkway. Keep Mediacomic Green wholeheartedly supports the resolution that Councilwoman Souza has put forth related to the preservation and future development of Veterans Memorial Parkway. Its passage would be consistent with several decisions made by this and the previous council. I trust that the resolution on the parkway will be read in its entirety when the time comes. When considering an amendment to the 2003 waterfront district plan to add the Mediacomic sub-district to the district, the city council on August 6, 2022, voted to amend the amendment by adding language limiting traffic on the parkway to its traffic capacity, such as in the Veterans Memorial Parkway sub-district and the Kettle Point sub-district. The waterfront commission subsequently voted in favor of the amended amendment. The city council on January 17, 2023, voted for a resolution that agreed in principle with the design guidelines proposed by Keep Mediacomic Green for the Mediacomic sub-district, which in part called for language to limit traffic on the parkway, and for the scale of development not to exceed the traffic capacity of the parkway to service the development. The city council on June 3, 2025, agreed to incorporate language in the proposed 2025-35 East Providence Comprehensive Plan that acknowledges the historic significance of the parkway and the city's continued emphasis on the preservation of its scenic character. The council on August 19, 2025, adopted the new comprehensive plan. Additionally, both the East Providence Historic District Commission and the East Providence Conservation Commission have voted to send statements to relevant state agencies in support of preserving the parkway's unique character. In August, K M G created an online petition asking for the public support to stop the destruction of the Veterans Memorial Parkway. When this evening's resolution was written, approximately 500 individuals had signed the petition. As of this morning, 724 individuals had signed on. Sixty-eight percent are from East Providence. The other thirty-two percent are primarily other Rhode Island residents and from nearby Massachusetts and Connecticut, but others in states across the country. Who are these other individuals? Transplants from East Providence? Past visitors to East Providence? Historians? Olmsted fans? We don't know. What we do know is that 100% of the people who signed opposed the destruction of the parkway. We also began gathering signatures on paper petitions in recent weeks by going door to door, by attending events and the like. So far, we have 137 signers, eighty-nine of whom are East Providence residents, representing 65 of the total signatures, 65% of the total signatures. Interestingly, a number of the non-resident signatures were gathered at the Mrs. Skipper Sculpture Site at Kettle Point. Again, they were primarily from other Rhode Island locations, as well as nearby Massachusetts, but as far-flung as Ohio and California. These out-of-town visitors purposely came to East Providence to enjoy our city and its attractions and amenities. Perhaps they also visited Crescent Park and the Carousel, or Ponem Rock's Lighthouse, Squanton Woods, or Bold Point. Perhaps they enjoyed biking along the East Bay Bike Path, or dining at local restaurants, taverns, and pubs. The connecting link to all these spots is the historic and iconic Veterans Memorial Parkway, which is an attraction in itself. You are the guardians of East Providence's culture and its history. The city council has voted numerous times to preserve and protect the parkway. We and the 861 signers of paper and online petitions encourage you to continue that stewardship by approving this resolution tonight. Lastly, if approved, in additions to the other state agencies named, this resolution should be conveyed to the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Affairs also. While RyDOT administers the parkway, D E M owns it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Questions of Seal?
Thank you.
All right, next person?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Renee?
Good evening, Council President and Council members. I am also here tonight to speak on behalf of Councilwoman Souza's resolution.
Welcome.
My name is Renee Chacon, and I'm a resident condo owner at 48 Kettle Point Avenue here in East Providence. I use Veterans Memorial Parkway on a daily basis, as well as the bike path, and appreciate its historic and scenic value. I would like to see this scenic and historic value maintained. Therefore, I recommend City Council approve the resolution related to the preservation of the Veterans Memorial Parkway. Candy mentioned I was going to also talk about the number of signatures, but I won't repeat what Candy has already stated as facts. I can also add to that, though, that approximately 70% of the condominium owners at Kettle Point have signed that petition as well. So thank you for this opportunity, and that's it.
Thank you for coming.
Susan Chase?
I guess she already spoke on her own petition.
Heather Andrade?
Good evening. I am Heather Andrade from Mopan Oak Trail, Riverside, Rhode Island.
Welcome.
I am with Keep Mediacomic Green and its sister site, Save Our Historic Lands. Once again, I stand here asking this council to help save the Veterans Memorial Parkway, formerly Barrington Parkway, from dissection and destruction. The five-year owner of the Mediacomic Gulf Coast Land, Mediacomic Properties, has included an historic public state-owned roadway in its plan to alleviate the estimated 6,000 to 11,000 extra vehicles that Mediacomic Properties, 890 new residences, plus retail, will cause on the V M P. That number is astronomical. I am sure we would all like to see a video of exactly what 6,000 to 11,000 extra vehicles daily, daily, will look like in real life, perhaps like the video made for the Henderson Rotary, although I am thinking the cars shown crashing in that original video will in fact be real life at the Parkway Rotary. We ask that you support Councilwoman Anna Souza's resolution tonight. Anna has not only her constituents in mind, but also respects the nature of why the parkway was constructed in the first place, and who it was constructed for, the public, not a developer of any kind. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the end of public comment.
Okay, thank you all who have come forward. Next item?
Public hearings, ordinance for second and final passage for discussion and possible vote, and ordinance in amendment of Chapter 18 of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended, entitled Vehicles in Traffic, is amended by adding thereto the following. Providence Avenue, both sides, from Sunset Avenue North, forty-four, fifty feet. Providence Avenue East Side, from Sunset Avenue South, for fifty feet, introduced by Council President Rodriguez.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
No, public hearing.
Yeah, any more questions in the council? That is, down is public hearing, second passage. Anyone here that wants to speak on it? I know some people have talked before. Yes, sir. Mark, come forward.
Good evening. My name is Mark Zito. I'm a lifetime resident of East Providence, other than when I was in the United States Army. I just wanted to state my opinion in regards to Veterans Memorial Parkway, and agree with everything that was just said this evening. But in my opinion, Veterans Memorial Parkway is the most beautiful, is part right now of Rhode Island. It's upscale. It would be a terrible thing to see it at bar lowered, and the flow of the traffic restricted. So because the land that was sold, and it's going to be residential and commercial, in my opinion, the Veterans Memorial Parkway should not be modified. The land that's going to be changed should conform to the Veterans Memorial Parkway. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
But to stay with protocol, sir, this is about Providence.
I was just going to say that because you have served our country, and I have also known you for a few decades, we'll allow that. But we're talking about a different ordinance right now, but I accept your comments.
I realize that.
Okay.
I just wanted to add to it, all right?
That's, that's okay.
The situation of Veterans Memorial Parkway is very important for the city of East Providence.
I hear you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
I think it's very important to say to all of you, I appreciate your hard work and commitment to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, November 12, we're having a veterans dinner at St. Martha's. Love to see you there.
So back to the.
Make a motion to approve.
Hearing, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Anyone else that wants to speak on this, which we've talked about before? What's that? Yeah, this ordinance, right, that we're talking about. I don't see anyone that'll close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Yep, here, public hearing is closed. Is there a hearing, no other?
Motion to approve.
Questions? Motion by Councilman Lawson to approve. Is there a second? Council Vice President Riga's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next item?
New Business Mayor Communications Director of Finance, Glenda Delgado.
Welcome, Director.
Good evening.
We're going to be seeing you for a while now?
No, we'll see. There isn't much to discuss tonight. I just had a few proclamations. I believe they're already in your packages. The 2025 National Small Business Saturday proclamation, the 2025 Dewali Festival of Lights.
Which is today, correct?
Twenty, yes, it's today.
Was it yesterday?
It was yesterday, yeah.
Yesterday.
And then the 2025 Native American Heritage Month, November 2025.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You know, it's not always going to be this easy, right?
Next thing.
Councilman Lawson, do you have anything on the school committee?
No, not today. We just passed the budget, and we heard from the school, the big spiel, so.
And do want to thank the school committee chairman and vice chair, both here at the meeting, keeping the avenues of communication between the two bodies going. Thank you both for.
And if, I think Sandy mentioned it, my middle school will be opening after Thanksgiving break.
December 1 is the day.
The middle school kids will be moved in, yep.
December 1 is scheduled to open. There will be a late November.
Twenty-fifth, I believe.
Open house ribbon cutting, right, 25th or 26th. It'll be advertised and.
And just to reemphasize for the folks down in Riverside, talking about Warrington, this phase is done. The next phase is to build the preschool on the other side of Martin, and once that's completed, Oldham, the former Metalcrest, will, those kids will move to Martin, which will free up, I believe, six to eight classrooms. So that will alleviate the overcrowding we have at Warrington. So it's going to be a couple of years, but it is going to happen. So for those that are concerned about crowding at Warrington, it's going to alleviate eventually.
Thank you. Next resolution?
Resolutions for discussion and possible vote. Number one, resolution authorizing the mayor to purchase a mini excavator for the Department of Public Works Water Utilities Division, introduced by Council President.
Make a, unless you want to speak, motion to approve.
No.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Lawson to approve, seconded by Council Vice President Riga. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have. Thank you. Next item?
Number two, resolutions related to the preservation and future development of the Veterans Memorial Parkway, introduced by Councilwoman Souza.
Thank you, Madam.
Councilwoman Souza, would you like to proceed?
Thank you so much. Fellow council members, community, as we know, this is an ongoing conversation and discussion and project throughout the city that has drawn a lot of attention and concern, and of course, the immediate neighbors in that area are of greatest concern, along with the rest of the community who utilizes that parkway. So the developers are going through their processes in which we have been participating in that with them. We realize that there are things that we're still trying to preserve in that area with that development and any future development. So we do know that the South Keys has been purchased. We are excited as a city to have that eventually be developed and bring more entertainment, residential area, shopping to the city of East Providence, which will help us not only economically, but our lifestyle in general. We do want to still maintain and preserve the importance. We do want to still maintain and preserve the important parts of our city that we love and hold dear. So, in that, I have presented a resolution tonight before the council for approval, and I'd like to read it in its entirety in the record. And then I would ask if the members or the director, president of Mediacomic Green, if you would provide for me or the clerk, the petition of signed and online names, so that that could be added to the record and to be sent also, in the event that this is approved by the council, to the mentioned entities that are listed on the resolution as testimony. So, the resolution is related to the preservation and future development of our Veterans Memorial Parkway. Whereas the Veterans Memorial Parkway was envisioned by the Metropolitan Park Commission in the early 1900s as part of an overall plan for park and connecting parkways from Providence metropolitan area, the Parkway in particular being planned as a scenic-pleasure-driving design to offer connectivity between green space and protected-by-park-like reservations of lands on either side. And whereas the renowned landscape architect firm Almond Brothers designed and led the construction of the Parkway during the 1910s and 20s, and whereas the major alteration purpose for the Parkway by the Marshall Development are not related to the park and connected Parkway, and whereas the Rhode Island Historic and Heritage Commission has determined that the Parkway is eligible for nomination for the National Registration of Historic Places, and whereas the Parkway is recognized as one of the nine scenic roadways in Rhode Island and is under the supervision of the Scenic Roadway Board, and whereas the Scenic Roadway Board is charged by Rhode Island General State Law 24-15-1 with creating and preserving the rustic and scenic highway for vehicular motorcycle pedestrian travel in unhurried, quiet, and leisure enjoyment to protect and to preserve the driving culture, beauty, trees, vegetation, shoreline, wildlife by establishing a protective standard of a scenic highway. The design, the speed, the maintenance will promote and continue the system of a scenic highway and a scenic easement for the public welfare and health. And whereas the Veterans Memorial Parkway stewardship plan prepared by the Scenic Highway Board in 1999 stated that heavy truck traffic is inconsistent with the design of the purpose of the Veterans Parkway, and whereas the plans proposed by the developer anticipate upwards of 30 daily tractor-trailers in a round trip on the Parkway in service of the development, and whereas the East Providence Historic District Commission and the East Providence Conservation Commission have voted to send a statement to relevant state agencies to support the preservation of the Parkway's unique character. And whereas over 500 individuals have signed, as if we heard today, there's over 800 individuals have signed a petition in opposition of this major alteration to the Parkway. And whereas, when considering an amendment to the 2003 East Providence Waterfront Special Development District Plan to add the Mediacomic subdivision, the City Council on August 16th voted to amend the proposal by adding language limiting traffic on the Parkway in its traffic capacity as the Veterans Memorial Parkway subdivision and Kettle Point subdivisions. So, whereas the East Providence Waterfront Special Development District Commission voted unanimously on September 15th, 2022, to approve that amendment, adding Mediacomic subdivision and amended by the City Council, the City Council's resolution on January 17th, 2023 supported, in principle, the design guidelines proposed by Mediacomic Green for the subdivision of the Mediacomic, which in part called for language to limit traffic on the Parkway and for the scale of the development not to exceed the traffic capacity of the Parkway to service and development. So, whereas the design guidelines of the East Providence Special Waterfront Development District for Mediacomic, Kettle Point, and Veterans Memorial Parkway subdivision states, development along the Parkway shall be proportional to the existing roadway's function and capacity. Curb cuts should be limited in size and location. Sinage should be limited in amount and scale. Additionally, traffic subdivisions, subsidations, and not to keep in with the culture of the Parkway, installation of traffic signals is strongly discouraged, and necessary, if necessary, be coordinated with DOT, the state, the Scenic Highway Board, and the Waterfront Commission to ensure minimal impact. Roadway widening would also detract from the character of the scenic qualities of the Parkway and is discouraged. And finally, the weight limitation of existing bridges, which is 5,000 pounds, would be considered when determining the nature and scale of the development. Increasing truck traffic would adversely affect the neighborhood and adjoining the Parkway. Whereas the continuation of public hearings, the City Council in June 3rd, 2025 agreed to incorporate language in the proposed 2025-2035 East Providence Comprehensive Plan. They acknowledge the historic significance of the Parkway and the city's continuation to emphasize on the preservation of its scenic character. And whereas on August 19th, 2025, the adoption of the 2025-2035 Comprehension Plan, the Parkway's original name, Barrington Parkway, was renamed the Veterans Memorial Parkway at the conclusion of the World War II to honor the East Providence residents who have served our country and who have made the ultimate sacrifice for us. And whereas the proposed major alterations may lead to a transformation of the Parkway from its 100-year history as a scenic roadway design for the benefit of the public and it's into a busy highway design to service a private development, now let it be resolved that the City of East Providence City Council urges all stakeholders, local, state, or federal agencies with any supervisory permitting and similarly authorized to exercise authority consistent with the historic vision of the Parkway, to take all necessary steps to advance the goals and policies as set forth in various regulations and governing documents as noted. Let it be also resolved that the city clerk should send a copy of this resolution to the office of the governor, the director of Rhode Island Department of Transportation, the City of East Providence General Assembly Delegate, the DMV, the DEM, excuse me, and to attach and include the over 800 individuals who signed the petition in support of preserving the Parkway. So, thank you for enduring that long, lengthy resolution, but I felt it really important to have it said, read, and heard by not only the council, who have, I'm sure, read it, but for those at home watching and those in the ordinance, in the audience, excuse me.
Certainly was the longest-read resolution I've ever heard. But you didn't mispronounce anything. You did a good job.
Thank you.
Comments from the council, or is there a motion?
We just need to amend it to include DEM and attach the petition, because that wasn't in the original. So, I think our motion is to amend the resolution to include that language first, and then you'll vote on the resolution as amended.
Correct. So, my first motion is to amend the resolution to include sending the resolution to the Department of Environmental Management with the attached individuals' signatures on the petition as documentation of support.
You want to add CRMC, just in case?
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll add C.
All the state acronyms, basically.
Just Google "state" acronym.
DEM and CRMC, correct?
Thank you. Thank you for that. So, that's my motion to amend.
I second the amend.
Motion made by Councilwoman Souza, seconded by Councilman Lawson. Further discussion, hearing?
The amendment.
Just the amendment. No other discussion on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have on the amendment. Next on the...
So, I make a motion to approve and accept the resolution as amended and open the floor to the council for any comments.
I second.
Motion to approve the resolution as stated by the councilwoman, seconded by Councilman Lawson. Hearing, yes, Councilman Fogarty?
Yeah, I was gonna, gonna add a couple of two cents here in regards to the movement that Ms. Anna Souza and Key Mediacomic Green have for the preservation. So, this is the right thing to do, right? Address all the stakeholders, DEM and all the ones you listed. So, I wrote this earlier, decided I might as well read it. I don't think it's as long as Councilwoman Souza's, but... Good evening, good evening, Mr. Regal. Good evening, council members and our city staff, and the residents here and those watching. As a 42-year resident of East Providence, parent of four adult children, grandparent of eight, I wish to offer my respectful thoughts regarding the proposed Rotary at Veterans Memorial Parkway and South Broadway. Several years ago, before there was any discussion of a Rotary or traffic redesign, I joined my friend and constituent Heather Andrade in her effort to keep Mediacomic Green. I stood with her every Saturday for nearly a year, not for politics, but because I believed in preserving that space and ensuring that any future development would be handled responsibly. Today, the property is legally owned by Marshall Properties, and as long as the owners meet every state and local requirement, they have both the right and responsibility to move forward within those standards. Our role as city officials is to stay informed, stay engaged, and maintain open communication so that whatever happens serves both the neighborhood and the broader community. When it comes to the proposed Rotary, I drive that Parkway multiple times daily. As one approaches South Broadway, the road narrows and curves near Kettle Point Orthopedic Group and near the flags, which, gotten the flags is very important. That stretch already presents visibility and congestion concerns. I believe a Rotary at that location could complicate traffic rather than improve it. While I personally do not believe a Rotary makes sense there, I also recognize that the engineers and planners at DOT, DEM, and within our city planning and engineering have the expertise to evaluate the situation thoroughly. I trust that they review all design and safety aspects carefully, listen to the residents, and make their decision based on data safety and what best serves the public. My hope is that this process continues in a positive, upward way, and final outcome, whatever it is may be, reflects the best interests of the people of East Providence. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. There's been a motion and a second?
I just want to add a couple of words. As I stated before, it's a shame that we're at this point, and I revealed this at a couple meetings ago, when I was on the tax board of review almost 20 years ago. That's the time that this city should have taken, had the opportunity to take that golf course, because they were so far in a rare. But politicians at this, at that time, some of them are no longer alive, decided they were gonna play ball with the members of the golf course, and this is where we are now. And I look at this, that two wrongs can't make a right. There's already a wrong because the city should have taken that property many moons ago, and as it's happened with other developers, you buy the property, you know what you're inheriting, they know what that road was like when they purchased, when they purchased the country club off a mystifax. So, now to just try to destroy a beauty in something that's uniquely distinct here, the trail, I mean, the Parkway reminds me of the Merritt Parkway, but obviously not with the high-speed traffic with the design. The time is now to come for us to support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any else? There has been a motion and a second?
I'm strongly supporting it.
Madam Clerk, could you call a roll of the council?
Councilman Fogarty?
Aye.
Councilman Lawson?
Aye.
Council Vice President Regal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Rogers?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Thank you all. Next item?
Adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.